Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Concord Township Zoning Commission here on Tuesday, March the 7th. So with that, Heather, if you could call the roll, please.
I will. Mr. Lingenfelter?
Here.
Mr. Repert?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Terriaco?
Here.
Mr. Eifelies?
Here. Thank you, Heather. Evening, members. Hope everybody is well. First order of business on our agenda is approval of the minutes of February the 7th, 2023. I'm going to make a first observation in the minutes since I wasn't present last month that going to be challenged to adjourn by 7:45. So my compliments to Mr. Peterson, standing in to finish the meeting by 7:45. So, good for you. But no, any comments on the minutes? Questions on February 7th, please?
No comments here.
Wow. No comments?
Yeah.
That's impressive. I'd say that was a first, but I think that was a second.
Then, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the February meeting.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 7th, 2023. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain. Okay, thank you. Moving on to correspondence. I know last month, I guess from the minutes, there was a piece of correspondence involving the item that we're having on our agenda here this evening, poultry. Is there any other correspondence received in the last month? Ron? Ira?
None.
None here.
Andy?
Nothing for me?
None.
Nothing at all?
Was unusually quiet.
Unusually quiet, which is good. Middle of what is a mild winter.
Quiet is good.
Yeah, yeah. If I may, we have a gentleman here in public. We usually do public participation before new business. May I ask if you're here to listen in on the poultry regulations, sir?
Yes.
Okay. So with that, there's no other person present. I might hold the public participation until we have that discussion so that in case you may have some questions for us, just take it a little bit out of order of our agenda, just to allow you that time after.
Okay.
Very good. So I'll move on to new business, postponing public participation for a moment. Work session to review poultry regulations. Before we begin, Heather has some slides to present to review with us. I have to admit, reading through the minutes, my compliments on the discussion was very widespread. I brought up points that might not have occurred to me in my mind, so I read it with keen interest and it kind of helped me prepare this evening, the way your discussion was had last month. So I appreciate that. So with that, Heather has some slides to present, overview of this. Heather?
Thank you. So I know, based on some residents asking the township to take a look at our existing zoning requirements regarding agricultural uses, specifically chickens, I thought before we got into that, that I would give just a little bit of background information on where the township derives its authority for regulating agricultural uses. Sorry, some of this is cut off. Is there what you're suggesting? Well, Brian's trying to make it fit on the screen here a little bit better. So just a brief outline here. The townships are creatures of the state. We only can do with zoning what the Ohio Revised Code allows us to do. So Section 51921 does contain some limitations on what the zoning commission can do. One of the topics within that is agricultural uses. Oops, sorry. I was just going to go over the definition briefly of what the ORC defines agriculture as, and then go over briefly our existing requirements that we already have in our zoning resolution regarding agricultural uses. And then take a look at some of the findings that we found when taking a look at other surrounding communities and how they treat chickens and other agricultural uses. Click to the next slide.
Oh, yeah.
This is why I want a really big TV in here or something. I don't know. Like, the setup is a little weird. So I'm not going to read all the words on the slide, and I did provide you in your packets the actual, you know, sections of the ORCs. You have that verbatim. But basically, townships have no ability to regulate any type of agricultural use, building or structure, if it's located on a parcel of land that's five acres or larger. We just don't have the ability to do that. But the ORC 51921 does allow townships, if they adopt it in their zoning resolution, to regulate agricultural uses on lots, if they are located within a platted subdivision that was created under Section 71105, 09, or 71110, or if they are in an area containing 15 or more lots that were approved under Section 711131. And the County Planning Commission actually is the entity that reviews and approves those types of lot splits and/or major subdivisions. So we do work with the county a lot on, is this in an area where we're allowed to regulate ag or not, before making decisions moving forward on zoning?
So Heather?
Yeah.
So the county, in terms of lots that are greater than five, they have jurisdictional authority?
No.
Who does?
No one. Not per zoning. Trustees cannot, you know, those agricultural uses probably would fall under, you know, various different entities as far as, I know, like, the Health Department has some regulations regarding manure and, like, hogs.
Okay.
Things like that. There could be other agencies in the state of Ohio that would regulate that, but when we're talking about townships and can you regulate agriculture, we can't regulate any agricultural use through our zoning or any action of our BZA.
I understand township.
Yep.
I assume somebody regulates a structure, a building.
No, because, yeah, because even if we deem a building an agricultural building, then the Building Department also would not require any kind of building permits.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
So I can put up a sile in my yard?
If you wanted to.
Well, your lot is about two acres, so you fall in an area where we do regulate agricultural uses, because we did adopt some rules regarding that.
Okay.
So just, why is this? Can we go to the next slide, Brian? I don't know why it's not working. Okay, so can't regulate anything over five acres. We can regulate them in certain situations, if it's in a platted development or in an area of 15 or more lots.
Well, we're waiting. Can somebody define poultry husbandry for me?
Well, my next slide actually was the definition of agriculture per the Ohio Revised Code, and I wasn't really going to read the whole thing, but it's pretty wide. Agriculture includes not only farming, but ranching, aquaculture, apiculture, which is having bees, some of these I'm not even really familiar with, horticulture, viticulture, animal husbandry, including but not limited to the care and raising of livestock, equine, fur-bearing animals, and then you get into the poultry husbandry and the production of poultry, poultry products. And it even goes into, you know, dairying, field crops, and vegetables, and nursery stock, and it's very specific.
Okay.
I'm just going to call. Yeah, I just need to advance to the next slide.
Somebody knows what they're doing with IT here. Hmm. You're an IT guy.
He's sitting here.
Yeah. I know, it's super simple, but for whatever reason, it's not.
Close it and reopen it. There you go. Give them a slideshow. Maybe leave it there.
Okay. Okay, so this was a long definition of agriculture.
Okay.
I'm not going to go into that. But so, again, still looking at ORC 51921, it allows townships to regulate the agriculture on lots that are one acre or less in size. We can also regulate buildings and structures that are incident to the use of agricultural uses, if the lot is between, greater than one acre but less than five acres. And it does also give us the authority to regulate dairying and animal and poultry husbandry on lots that are greater than one acre but less than five acres. But no, yeah, but greater, yeah, less than five acres, when at least 35% of the lots in the subdivision are developed with at least one building. So this section of the ORC also goes on and provides for additional opportunities for townships to regulate other agricultural type uses such as farm markets, biodiesel production, energy production. In some of the newer sections added to the ORC was the biological derived methane gas production, and also agritourism. We do have some regulations also regarding the farm markets, but we have not written anything on the last three bullet points. So those could be something in the future we look at. But back in 2011, the township did adopt zoning per the allowance of the ORC to regulate agricultural uses in some areas. So, and I apologize, this is cut off, but Section 601B2A of the zoning resolution currently states that if your lot is one acre or less and you are located within a platted subdivision, the only type of agricultural use you're allowed to do includes raising fruits, vegetables, or nursery stock for your private use consumption, or you could do an incidental sale as well, so a small little sale from your front yard. And then it goes on to, you know, how we regulate the size of the building and the location and things like that. We also have in there, right now, if you have a lot that's greater than one acre but less than five acres, we have some restrictions on where the buildings can be located, but we don't really limit the type of agricultural uses. So basically, anything that falls under the definition of agriculture, per the ORC, would be permitted if it met all the criteria as far as setbacks and things like that. So if someone wanted to have chickens on a two-acre lot, they could have that already with our regulations that are already in existence, as long as the coop structure that they're going to house the animal in would meet the setbacks that we actually have in the next section that is specific to dairying and animal and poultry husbandry. So those setbacks are a little bit larger than it would typically be for a traditional, like, barn or shed that you might be using for your storage. If you're going to house animals, we require that the structure be at least 70 feet back from the road right away, 25 feet away from side and rear lot lines, and if you have a well on your property, we have a distance from your well as well, which is 100 feet. So that's what we have in place. We've pretty much adopted that since 2011. Really hasn't been any tweaks. I think we moved it a little bit in the section that it's in, but it really hasn't changed since 2011. This is an example of, actually, a place in Concord. It's about a three-acre lot. This is a photo that I took from the street, basically from Hoos Road. They fall within that one to five acres. They're about three and a half acres, and under this zoning district, they're allowed to have poultry. So this resident actually had chickens and ducks, and there were a lot of them. And all the coops met all the setbacks. The house is probably 200 feet off the road, if not more, 300 feet. And based on the way that their house was built and their yard and the lot and everything, the best place for them to put everything was in the front yard. Still met all the setbacks. They're more than 70 feet back from the road right away. They're on a city water, so we don't have to worry about a well, and they meet all the other side yard setbacks. But we don't have a limitation on the number currently of chickens, or fowl, or poultry, or anything that they're allowed to have, which basically allowed them to have as many as they wanted. So they probably, they had, like, four coops there, and there were another four coops somewhere else. And if you recall, under our zoning, if you're over two acres, you could have multiple accessory buildings, as long as each one doesn't exceed that 1,532 square feet. And that applies to this, too. We don't have any separate restrictions for these agricultural uses. So it could get big. This is another location over on Fay Road. These people just have a very modest little coop structure here on a run, you know, for some chickens as well. So it could be very small like that. And this is, this actually, this lot is not in an area where we can regulate ag. It's not in a platted subdivision. It's not in an area where we've had 15 or more of those lot splits. So they actually did not even have to come to us to get a zoning permit for that, because it's not located in an area where we can regulate it. I did look into, I checked with a couple other agencies, because I know there were some questions at the last meeting, like, the Health Department would ever get involved in any of this. I did email and reach out to Chris Lockstrom at Lake County General Health District. He's the environmental health supervisor there, just to see if they had any regulations that would cross over, you know, poultries or chickens, or any thoughts, you know. I told him what we were kind of talking about. And he came back and said that the Health Department does not have any regulations that, over chickens. They have some requirements, but more specific to the hogs, if someone's going to have hogs, and then manure. So there isn't anything specific as far as chickens and how the Health Department would get involved. So they're not currently involved with anything, you know, regarding that, and they wouldn't be even if we added something. I also, when researching some of the other communities and how they, you know, police or enforce, like, their requirements, a lot of them, you'll find out, like, the Police Department gets involved in enforcement on this kind of stuff. And there is something in the Ohio Revised Code, I don't know if I gave you a copy of this, but it's Section 951.02, and it's animals running at large on public roads or grazing on other people's land. So basically, there is a law that doesn't allow, you know, it could be a violation of the Ohio Revised Code if you have pets, chickens, animals that come into the roadway, or if they're trespassing on neighbors' properties, you could call the sheriff. You could get ticketed for something like that. So I thought that was interesting, because I know there were some questions and concerns about if people were going to have chickens, making sure they weren't free range, going onto the neighbors. And the first picture I showed you, there was an instance where those folks did have chickens coming over onto other people's property, including township property. So. Oh, I also did, in our eGrapevine that we send out monthly, I put a little blurb in there, just because I knew we were going to have this meeting, just to let folks know we were going to have a conversation. I think that's probably why a couple individuals showed up, maybe to give their thoughts on it, but just to let people know that this is what we're looking at, and, you know, some feedback on it. I heard back from, like, six people, kind of just in different, with different thoughts behind it. A gentleman over on Cheryl Drive said it was a bad idea, and that you should have to have five acres if you're going to have chickens. Another gentleman was excited about the idea of it, because... I'm sorry, he was excited about the idea about raising chickens, being able to raise your own food in that opportunity. Some residents over on Colleen Drive, yes, yes, yes. Another gentleman on Cabriolet said he would be here at the meeting. One of our, over in the Hunt Club, one of the people that are involved with their homeowners association emailed and just said, you know, if you have residents over in the Hunt Club that are asking, we have deed restrictions that would not allow that. So that is something else to consider we haven't talked about, so.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah.
The issue that I was thinking about, I don't know if that would be a legal counsel question, or who would address that, but, you know, so if the township has the regulations to allow it, but then deed restrictions say no, who takes precedent? Do the deed restrictions override the township's regulations? So if the township says you're allowed to have them, but you're in a platted development where they say no chickens, then do you have to follow the deed restrictions, or can you defer to the township regulations?
Most likely, you would defer to the deed restriction, even if, just anything that is allowed, but as long as the deed restriction has, you know, been in place since you purchased the home, it applies to all of the different homes that are covered. Most likely, the deed restriction would prohibit you from being allowed to have chickens. Now granted, you'd probably be, the HOA or whatever group it is over it would be limited to, you know, fines or what recourse they have through that. You wouldn't be able to get, you know, the local police department or, you know, the township zoning involved with it, but they could try to enforce it through their means.
So they wouldn't be, so if they had a deed restriction in place from a homeowners association standpoint, then they wouldn't, the homeowners association wouldn't be able to rely on the township to enforce that deed restriction, or the Lake County Sheriff, or whoever?
Generally speaking, I think so. Again, it's kind of hard to tell, you know, because every deed restriction, I mean, some of them go back a long time, you know, they've been recorded since the initial plat development. But most of the time, HOA restrictions, covenants are enforced by the HOA.
Heather, you mentioned, going back, the chickens running across the road.
Yeah.
Is, do not the...
Raises the question.
Why did the chicken cross the road? He's being funny. Do our regulations require beyond the coop that be fenced in? Is it not?
Right now, the way our regulations are written, it's not very specific.
It isn't?
To any type of animals. So after we, really looking at this section, maybe kind of think about, even if we don't allow it on smaller lots, we might need to make some tweaks to our current resolution as it relates to lots greater than one acre. Yeah, because it's, we don't even mention coop in our ag zoning. So in taking a look at other communities and what they say, like, it really is, like, maybe we need to hone in the text a little bit and be more specific to requiring a coop that's, you know, secure from predators, and having a run, and making sure that they're not free range, and having a fenced-in area, and maybe even having that fenced-in area setback from the property lines. Because right now, we just have, the building has to be set back from the property lines, but really, I would think any enclosure for that animal, if you're going to have it, should meet those setbacks.
Ken, since you brought that up, Heather, you did a wonderful job with these other communities. You overview this data that you provided?
Yeah, and before we get into that, I'm sorry, there was one more email we had from another resident over on Allegheny. He has some concerns about it, based on, I guess, a neighbor already in his development has some poultry, including a rooster that's been annoying to him. He was worried about, you know, if people had chickens, you know, and if there was a creek on their property, would the waste be going into the creek, and what kind of impacts that might have? And then he was worried about chickens trespassing on other people's property and damaging it, and didn't feel like it was moving in the same direction that the township's been moving, to be more urbanized.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay.
So that was, and I'll forward all these if you want to read them all.
Okay.
I know, just kind of summarizing for you. But that's kind of what we heard, very informal. And then, yes, we did try to, Selena and I worked on, you know, trying to take a look at all of the, pretty much, we almost looked at all the Lake County townships, municipalities, and then I kind of went a little bit to some communities in Cuyahoga. But it was all over the place regarding, really, whether or not the town, whether or not the communities allowed it. I mean, a lot of them, you're seeing, yes, they're allowed, but if you look at some of the minimum lot sizes, it's, they're large lots. So, for example, on the first page, at the very bottom, so Painesville City, they allow them, but you got to have five acres. This one's interesting, because you can have them in a couple of the districts, they have to be enclosed, but most of the lots are actually under five acres, so it's not very likely that they'll be able to have them. I also kind of think that, talking with some of the officials, like, people have them, but if there's no complaint, sometimes there's not a lot of proactive enforcement on that.
My kind of take on this is that the communities that are high-density, small lots, it's all, it's relative. East Lakes, the Fairport Harbor.
Yep.
Small lots, so there are restrictions on a smaller lot. They allow them.
Yes, yeah, and that's what I tried to do, yeah. So if they didn't, if they did not define a minimum lot size, what I did is I just listed what their minimum lot sizes were, because they, specifically, like, for Chardon, the city of Chardon, they don't really specify a minimum lot size to allow poultry, but they allow it. And so we looked at, okay, so in all their residential districts, what's the range of lot sizes? And that's why I put that 55, from as small as 5,500 square feet to a minimum lot size of two acres. So all within that range.
55, that's 50 by 100.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like Fairport, there's 40-foot lots at Fairport.
Less than.
Painesville.
A little bit over a tenth of an acre.
Mm-hmm.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, hold on.
Here's one 3,600 square feet, right around the lake.
Yeah, because the minimum lot size, because it's not specified, as you indicated, Heather.
Correct.
So they show up to half an acre.
Some of the communities made like a conditional use permit, so interesting, like, the Painesville Township on the second page, that's a good comparison. If you have less, if you're, if you have less than .5 acres, you have to get a conditional use permit. So you have to go to the BZA to get approved before you can have the poultry. But if you're over the .5 acres, then it's just a permitted use, and you would just come to the zoning inspector and get a zoning permit. They do have setbacks similar to, like, what we would have, 20 feet. But what I found interesting is a lot of communities were actually prohibiting these structures from being in the front yard. That way, you would prevent a case like we had, you know, if the house is set back far, if you were worried about somebody having that in the front yard. They've written it in such a way that you couldn't even do it to the size of the house, it really has to be behind the house.
That one on Hoos is a real eyesore.
Yeah, and the last time I was there, like, there were no poultry, but the structures were still there. So I don't know what's going on with that. Yeah.
Nasty looking.
Yeah. And that comes to, like, you know, what Painesville Township has done, is they actually limited the area that you can use on your property. So within that backyard, you can use no more than 25%. So within that backyard, you can use no more than twenty-five percent of that land area for your agricultural use. That's something else to consider, and somebody wouldn't use their whole entire backyard, like, um, so. And then a lot of communities put a limit on the number and type of poultry, because poultry is chickens, it's geese, it's turkeys, it's ducks, it's roosters. So you would want to be very specific if you wanted to limit or prohibit certain types of animals, such as roosters, which tend to be the annoyance, um, for folks. Then some of the communities, including, um, Painesville Township, required screening. So like either natural vegetation from the adjoining property owners or fencing, so your neighbors wouldn't have to look yet. And even, uh,
I was surprised to see Western Lake County, Wickliffe and Willoughby.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes. It's on the last page, yeah. I know, and Willoughby's was relatively new. And actually Wickliffe's was almost identical, so they probably shared ordinances when they were looking there. But yeah, I mean, like Willoughby, they have, typically they have small lots, ranging from six thousand square feet to fifteen thousand square feet. And just for reference, you know, in our, most of our lots are half acres, like twenty-two thousand square feet. If you're on the west side of Concord or in the R1, when you get over to the east side of Concord and the R4, you're minimum one acre. So, but Willoughby, you know, they, they have, again, relatively smaller setbacks based on the lots being smaller than what we would typically have. But they do, they, they, they require that the coops be in the backyard. They don't allow them in the front yard, they have to be five feet from side and rear lot lines. And then they really put a maximum size on that coop and, um, really shrinking it down, thirty-two square feet. Just enough to house your six chickens, you're allowed to have there with no roosters. And they also require and make sure that they have access to an outside area, um, that's still like fenced in. They also allow, I thought bees, like agriculture, so. Wickliffe, again, like similar regulations, um, but they also allow ducks and rabbits and other similar farm animals. So you might get somebody who's like doing 4H, and I know I've been asked here, and like someone who, who had a son or daughter that was trying to do 4H and they wanted to raise, you know, some animals outside for a short amount of time. And the way our resolution is written, it doesn't allow that unless you've got the, the one acre. But Wickliffe also then prohibits the geese and the turkeys and roosters, so.
They permit it in all districts.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think people in commercial are gonna do it.
You could go to your seven eleven and there'd be chickens behind it.
There technically could be, I, I don't know, yeah. I mean, I thought it was interesting, like South Euclid, I, I went and looked over there too, just because actually that was the one community that the initial residents were, um, talking about. When they moved from there to here, they thought that they also could continue to have poultry, um, found it, um, that we were more strict than the community that they had moved from. So I was like, well, let me take a look at what they allow there, um, similar to some of the other W communities here in Lake County. I found it interesting, they, they flat out prohibit the slaughtering, which is good, I guess. Maybe they had a problem with that or, slaughtering of the chickens. They talk about making sure everything's sanitary and, and stuff like that as well, and, and address, um, the manure too, so. But it's kind of, you know, all over the place, just, but it's definitely a trend, I think, of communities allowing it in more urban areas. And happy to answer any questions you have at this point or see where the discussion goes.
Lot of questions.
Yeah.
But thank you Heather for all that information presentation.
This is amazing.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much for all the research on this, this has been very helpful. Before we come, uh, I, I mentioned before we delayed public participation, now that we've had a presentation on this. I'm gonna open public, public participation, if, uh, anyone wants to comment on this item on our agenda or any item, uh, before the, before this board, uh, please come forward, state your name and address. Please.
I'm Dan Martin, I'm the one who, um, sent the email from Cabriolet. That, um, I, I just came really to find out what the thought, what the thoughts were in the township in general. I live in Carriage Hills, if you know where that is.
Sure.
Been there for twenty-five years, um, bought the house from the original person who built it. I believe when I bought the house, they gave me the deed restrictions that were part of the neighborhood, but they, it was never an HOA created, nothing was ever really developed in order to, you know, for lack of a better word, enforce that. So above ground pools, privacy fences, things that were on that deed restriction, they ended up happening anyway, so. So, but I came really because I didn't, you know, I didn't buy my house twenty-five years ago to be next to a farm. So, um, understanding what, you know, you know, once you kind of open up Pandora's box, how do we get it back? Cause I'm, I'm sure you'll have some people that'll build a cute little coop with a nice little run and it'll be, you know, it'll be nice, it'll be pretty and they'll take care of it and they'll manage it. But, you know, I don't want to be calling the police because somebody's chickens are in my pool. And that's, that's where it gets to. And then, cause we have that issue with people's dogs. You know, people let, you know, let their dog get out and then you've got, you know, the, the, the dogs in your yard and going, you know, bathroom and all the issues you deal with that. And I realize that's part of, you know, living with other people, it's gonna happen. But chickens, and that's just seems to be, I, I think our acre, our lot size are about a half an acre. Mine feels a little bigger, cause I have, I'm on a corner, so I have a setback, um, easement setback on both sides, so it feels, it feels bigger than that. So, uh, so really that's where I really just kind of want to know why we're talking about this. Yeah, does it sound like, is it currently, if I understood what you said, that it's permitted to have chickens on a property less than half an acre?
No, no, no sir.
It's not, okay. I thought there was one of the slides early on, when I was watching it, that said something about,
Over one acre.
Right, so right now it's one acre.
Over one acre, up to five.
The consideration right now is, do we want to make it less than that?
Because of, uh, citizens' request for consideration.
Egg prices, that was a concern.
Yeah.
Egg prices.
Well, I think it takes a lot of eggs, savings on eggs to pay for a coop and a bunch of chickens and a bunch of fencing and, and I would imagine that's cyclical too, right? I mean, I don't imagine that, um, the egg prices will be there forever either. Uh, but that, those are my concerns.
Very good.
That because I, you know, I could see that if, if this would become a problem, that we'd just sell our house and move. And I don't want to have to, you know, if somebody wants to raise chickens, they should go buy a house with enough acreage on it to, to raise chickens, so.
Very good sir, I appreciate your comments, thank you for sharing them. Sir? State your name and address, please.
Chris Segoski, nine-nine-four-six Aspen Court in Morley Hills Estates. And esteemed members of the community, thank you for having this, this meeting, discussing this. I guess one thing that's important is, uh, dispelling myths and the need to have a rooster to have eggs produced by chickens is, is a myth. So we can have a quiet, uh, coop, very discreet, that you wouldn't even know was present. I think, um, your concerns, well stated, were decreasing the value of homes, decreasing the general, your enjoyment of the community.
You can address the board, those gentlemen's here, you can, you can address us.
Yeah, I think, um, so I, I can understand the concerns of, of community members. What is this gonna do property values? Am I gonna have, again, chickens in my, my pool? Basically, it's a question of will citizens and members of the community be good members of the community? I would like to think that certain, certainly people ought to be good members of the community and what do you do whenever they're not? I think there are things that are in place to handle that. I would draw your attention to the city of Cleveland, who in two thousand and nine had, um, adopted, actually they're very comprehensive, I don't know if they were in your notes, um, very comprehensive way of handling. It wasn't just chickens, it was chickens, ducks, rabbits, or similar animals. Um, where, you know, one per eight hundred square feet of parcel or lot area in residential districts, again, city of Cleveland, and then also allowing goats, pigs, sheep, and similar animals on parcels greater than twenty-four hundred, uh, twenty-four thousand square feet, so. Very interesting what even the city of Cleveland permits. There was the one comment from the member, I think it was emailed with, um, concern about, uh, trending more toward the urban, an urban area and that chickens aren't, don't fit there. And yet we have the city of Cleveland, which is an urban area, you know, allowing, at least in their, in their code here, goats, pigs and sheep, ducks, chickens, rabbits. So, I found that interesting myself. Um, somebody mentioned the price of eggs. If you've looked at the price of eggs, they were double, uh, in December, January of this, of this year, December of last year, from the year before. Um, that's not insignificant. And I think what we've seen is that in, since twenty-twenty, since COVID, there's definitely been greater uncertainty of supply chain. And so members, certain members of the community feel, well, if only we had more, if we had more gardens, a, a more local food supply, there'd be less concern about these things. And again, this is, uh, in our own, in our own, uh, local friends, things like that. Cleveland Heights, South Euclid, you know, thinking, whoa, if you can have them in places like that, surely you could have them in Concord, right? We have farms in Concord and yet came to find, actually it was, was not the case. So, um, what am I trying to say here? I think, uh, I would say, let's, you know, there are certainly concerns to be raised. Why don't we find out what the larger community desires and if there are problems, putting things into place to address those problems and, and deal with it. Thanks for your attention.
Very good, thank you sir, thank you for sharing those comments with us, thank you. There's, if there's no one else from the public to address the board, the public participation is, is closed. Uh, we'll go back to, uh, discussion amongst the board here on, on, uh, the poultry regulation.
Is there anybody on the phone?
No, no.
I just open it up for discussion. Board is kind of continuing, learning more. Thank you Heather, again Heather for, for, um, wasting that time, sharing that, very helpful. As, as I mentioned before, uh, I thought the, the board last month had, had made some very good observations, things that, um, hadn't thought of, which Andy just reiterated, one of them, deed restrictions overriding a more restrictive covenant is, uh, probably governed by the HOA and how they enforce their, their restrictions.
If it's an active HOA.
If, if it's an active HOA.
And that's always seems to be the issue with, with homeowners associations and deed restrictions is, is, is the, is, is the homeowners association an active homeowners association? I think there are, there's legal precedent and there's some things that are out there that basically if they don't, if they don't, or if they fail to enforce the deed restrictions over a certain period of time, then they basically become moot. So, you know, and that's where you run into where people, like you said, you know, above ground pools aren't allowed and, you know, certain kind of styles of fences aren't allowed. Well, if somebody puts a fence in and nothing gets done about it, well, that pretty much, you know, it's pretty, pretty clear as to what good the deed restrictions are at that point, so if you don't have an active.
Yeah, the only reservation I have on that, Andy, is it's still a recorded document, so I lived in a neighborhood where it wasn't as active, but those things, uh, still, they're, they are covenants, they are recorded on the county. So, uh, there were issues that were brought up, even though we didn't have an active HOA in our, my former neighborhood. But nevertheless, um, really, really open for a discussion here. Any members of board for, for comments, maybe further questions?
Rich, please.
I'll take one, Rich. First of all, I'm looking at this sheet here. And many of these communities are cities or villages, which have whole different level of enforcement than a township does. Uh, you'll notice that in Mennor or, or, uh, Chardon or Fairport, it's contact, if you have a complaint, contact the police department. Obviously, we don't have a police department and in a township, it's really hard to regulate just about anything. Uh, I look at our abandoned properties that we have in the township. Uh, people storing boats in driveways that have been there for years, across the street from your dad, Ron, for example. Uh, RVs that are stored improperly. There's no, no ability to enforce these things if you're a township. And, uh, I mentioned last month, I took an informal survey of ten different people in different locations in Concord and it was ten to zero against chickens on a half acre lot. Uh, when you move into a sub-development, you know it's a sub-development, you know there are restrictions and it's not for farming. And chickens can be a, a real nuisance. I used to live in a, my last subdivision and there was a rooster, not supposed to be there, but it took forever to get that rooster out of there and it was very loud and obnoxious. And it's just one more thing that we would have to police just because of a cyclical price of eggs, which a year from now probably won't even be an issue. So I see no compelling argument to allow chickens on lots that are under a half acre, my opinion.
Well said, Rich, thank you. Thank you, thank you for those comments. Andy?
You're looking at me.
I'm looking at you, yeah.
I, no, I, I, and I'll just reiterate what I said in the last meeting. My, my thoughts are that, um, understanding the circumstances and, and things change over time, that, uh, I think if we're going to consider something like this, we should limit, uh, the number of chickens that somebody can have if it's less than the one acre lot size, you know, if we go, if you want to allow it in a subdivision, then I think it should be, that we, we should be very specific as to what, um, what, what people can do. And I, I think the elimination of a rooster, cause it really, there really is no need for a rooster. So I don't see any reason to, for somebody to have a rooster. And I think that's, that would be a big issue for a lot of people because of the noise and everything else that, that, that they, that they create. And I think what we do is we consider limiting the number of chickens you can have, because if it's a personal consumption thing, then I would think that if you would put a cap on say four or five chickens, maybe a, a half a dozen chickens, something in that neighborhood, I think that that, there's, there's pretty, there's pretty good documentation and, and information available as to how many eggs a, a chicken will produce through the course of a week, a month, et cetera. So if it's personal, I, I, I think we could limit the number of chickens they have, cause if it's personal consumption, then it's, I think that we could put a reasonable limit and keep things within, you know, within that, uh, with, within the spirit of allowing people to, to raise their own chickens and do that without infringing on their neighbors, you know, right to the enjoyment of their property as well, cause chickens for the most part don't make a whole lot of noise, they don't. And if you were dealing with a limited number of chickens, you're not gonna have probably a whole lot of smell or a lot of issues with upkeep and things of that nature, and especially if they're, they're penned, you know, or inside some sort of an enclosure, uh, you know, I, I would think that they would be, they would be pretty innocuous. I, I think sometimes dogs and other pets have more, probably more issues than, than a chicken would. So I would, I would think that in a, in a, in an environment like that, in a subdivision, sans deed restrictions obviously, but, um, if there aren't any deed restrictions in place, or if, uh, that sort of issue isn't specifically called out in the deed restriction, I think that a, a happy medium would be to allow people to have chickens, but a limited, a, a number of chickens in, in that, and, and be very specific about how it has to be done. With setbacks, I, I think side yard clearances, setbacks, things of that nature, I think are important. You know, but I think that, I, I think if somebody wants to have a couple of chickens for personal consumption use to make, to lay some eggs and have eggs for their family, I, I just personally don't see any issue with that.
Okay, thank you Andy, thank you. Ron? Comments?
With the zoning text that's in place now, what kind of complaints do we get, if any, throughout the township?
Regarding chickens?
Chickens, yes.
Um, the ones we've had is trespassing onto neighboring properties. Concern, uh, there was a concern that there were so many. The one that I had the pictures of.
So then, then how did we enforce that?
Well, we went over and spoke to the resident first, we didn't, I didn't even know that, that the resident on the one picture is on, you know, had that going on at that moment until the neighbor brought it to our attention. Went over there, talked to them first of all about the restrictions, you know, location of the coops and, you know, the importance of fencing. Um, and they were trying, they were having issues with the fencing that they put up because there were gaps underneath it, so that the poultry were coming out. And then, and then they thought that, they assumed that the chickens wouldn't wander that far, cause they were allowing them to free range during the day. And, cause their fenced enclosure area wasn't complete yet and we found them over at the park. So it was a couple of conversations and site visits and trying to get them to, you know, secure their fencing. know, secure their fencing. Um, but.
So the, very, so, so it's more of a maintenance issue?
Yes.
Of the owner?
Yeah.
Not so much the chicken creating noise or?
No, yeah, I mean, we can't, there, there is a, somebody has a rooster over by uh, in Guinea Fowl, which are very loud, I guess. Um, but they're on a lot where we can't regulate ag over by Button Road, um, by Concord Plaza-ish, that area. I've, I've talked to a resident on several occasions, they're somewhat annoyed by this rooster, rooster, but that's not in an area where we can regulate the ag. So I, I couldn't help them out in that stance, but that, that was the other complaint.
Any odor complaints?
I'm not, no, personally, no one's complained to me about odor. But I don't have any idea actually how many people have chickens in Concord. I mean, I'm sure there's some folks that have them that we're not aware of.
So my other comments would be, one of, with deed restrictions or homeowner associations, that does become a challenge, cause I worked with one of the strictest codes from my previous employment and it was always a challenge going into communities or especially condominiums. I know we're not talking about condominiums, but deed restrictions always came up because I had to go, always come back to the complaint and what's in your deed restrictions? Well, it's clearly that they can't do this. It's clearly that we can't do it in the fire code. But with the fire code, you're moving into residential areas so that it always became, and I could see it being the same here, it's in your deed restriction. It is, but you're still going to have to enforce it. And it always became a challenge, so it became more work to enforce that. I agree if, Andy, regulate the number of chickens. In a, in, no roosters, regulate the number of chickens and make sure that it's a clean environment. But I think before we go to that, we probably need to look at what's in place now and make sure that that is cleaned up before we step into another area to allow or not allow. That would be my comments.
Thanks, Ron. Thank you. Uh, before we go to Hiram, Heather, did you indicate, and I might have misread from the minutes that the, you brought it to my attention, fire code. The fire department had comment or issue related to this? I, do I recall seeing that in the minutes?
Oh, no, 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 no. There was a question about whether the health department.
Health department?
Yes.
Sorry. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Heather, uh, Hiram?
I'm not opposed to having chickens in half acre lots. In general, they've got to be totally regulated, meaning setbacks, cages, the whole bit. Uh, the number has to be regulated, but the big, the big issue is how are we going to enforce it? You, you, you can't, you just can't. So with that big issue sitting out there and are, are we going to have, you know, 500 permits coming in next month to put a chicken coop? Nah, I don't think so. But in, in, in general, I'm, I, I'm opposed to it from the regulation standpoint, from the enforcement standpoint. You're not going to be able to control it. So now, here's, here's, what are we doing now? What's the difference between one acre or two acre enforcement and half acre enforcement? I don't know if we're enforcing, if we have enforcement capabilities now anyway. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of torn both ways, but in general, if it were to come up to vote right now, I'd probably say no.
Okay. Thank you, Hiram. Thank you. Um, I, for me, I'm, um, I rest on what our charge here is aboard is zoning uh, and property owners' rights. Um, while I'm sympathetic to the issue, I, again, I think it's transient. I don't think it's, to react to something, I'm sympathetic to it, to the cause, but it, uh, I would agree with the comments, particularly what Rich said in regulation. But even before I get to that, in my mind, a half an acre platted subdivision in Concord is, whether it has deed restrictions or not, there are expectations of property owners in those, in those developments. And uh, not that they're unique from other parts of Lake County, I just feel that it's not appropriate. I just feel it's not appropriate in, in the planted developments that are uh, in, in this township. Um, and then the regulation part is also, just adds more work that I don't know how you regulate number and I, I just, I just can't see a trespassing chicken. It's just like, it's, I, I, I find it inappropriate for us, for us, in, in my opinion, in my opinion. Um, so the, the purpose here today was kind of a work session to discuss it. Um, and we have kind of presented our.
Yeah, let, let, let's just take it from there. And, and that's why I'm going, we, we have a hard time regulating it with the half acre lot. So what are we doing now with the two acre lot?
There might only be a handful of people that even have chickens.
Yeah, yeah. And there's.
So it's not an issue.
And there's many more half acre lots in this township than there are two acre lots. Many more people, I mean, population of the township now is what?
Twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two thousand people. Um, and how, well, the percentage that are on half acre lots is quite significant, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
I'm guessing it's significant.
More, more half acre lots than two acre lots?
Yes.
Way more.
Yeah, way more. And that's just, for me, and on that premise, it's, for me, chicken and poultry, it's, it's an intrusion on the half acre lots. It's not, it's not right.
I truly think that if it were put to a vote of the residents of Concord, it would be 90% against. I really do.
I, I don't disagree with that.
I think it would be interesting to see what happens. Personally, I don't, I don't agree with that at all. I think you might be surprised.
We have enough headaches now, you know, without introducing an element like that.
For what purpose? What are you afraid of? Put it out there, let the people decide. Then let them decide. I think that's a great idea. Let the people vote on it. You might be surprised.
Well.
It might go down 90 to 10 and it might, it might go 60, 44. You never know.
I don't think so. Based on talking to the people that I've talked to, nobody was in favor, not one. And that was from neighborhoods all over Concord.
Put it out in next great volume.
Well, I think, I'll tell you, well, you know, if you want my personal opinion on this, I think if you, you want to find out what the interest level is in the township, have a public hearing, see what happens. If this place is packed, then you'll know it's an issue. If there's nobody here, then you'll know it's not an issue.
Yeah.
Okay? Simple as that.
Yeah.
Cause we, we've had lots of public hearings where.
Nobody is.
That wouldn't even, the three people that are here tonight aren't even here. Okay? We've had public hearings and then we've had public hearings on other issues and we've had to open up the town, open up the fire station next door to take care of the overflow. So, you know, I, I see that tendulum swing both directions, but I think if you really want a good, I really want a good taste of what the township feels about this, put it on the agenda and put a public hearing out there and see what, how many people show up. I think that would be a very good measuring stick.
Well, you've got the basis right here. All the, all the restrictions and what people are going to do, you know?
Keeping in mind that cities and villages have a lot more enforcement authority.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You're absolutely right. We have very little enforcement capability here.
Appreciate the dialogue, appreciate the, the items I, I, as chair, I think I want to close this on. I think we have a uh, majority that we're not going to go forward, cause that's my impressions here. We don't have enough to pursue development of a regulation or to even consider this forward. Uh, protocols, counselor, I don't know, it's, it's not something before us, I don't need a motion or in terms of closure of this, I can just pronounce it closed, I presume.
Uh, yeah, if you're not going to.
Take it any further to, like, any type of legislation.
Correct. You would not need to make a motion.
Um, is there any objection to that, to me proceeding to do that?
No.
Based upon, based upon what I've heard this evening?
None here.
Okay. Very good. Well, we'll consider that item closed. Thank you. Thank you again, Heather. Thank you for your participation this evening.
Thanks, guys.
We're going to consider that new business closed?
So the chicken's not going to go to the other side of the road, right?
Correct. Thank you. Um, thank you, board members. Let's, let's, did make 7:45.
They don't want.
They don't want, but.
You're not going to beat me.
But, no, but uh, what we have, uh, the old business here is the work session uh, that will uh, take on here, the review, the proposed amendments to the zoning resolution, section five, definition, section 2203, table of uses, and section 13, the conditional use permit. Heather has put the proposed zoning text amendments in our packet. Uh, there's a number of them. Um, the, thanks again to Heather and colleagues, the work effort in, in producing this to this point. Uh, there's been good discussion, good give and take on the table of uses and so forth, so really appreciate it. I think we have something before us that, uh, for consideration that hopefully we can move forward. Uh, so with that, um, I believe, again, protocols is to take each amendment singularly for consideration for vote, um, as we work through the proposed amendments. Am I correct on that?
Did, um, did you want to just kind of go through them real quick or, or were you guys think you were ready to move forward, maybe initiating the action?
Glad you brought up, I was ready to move forward, so maybe I'm being presumptive in, in that. Uh, I just thought there was a lot of work and discussion, even up last, last month's meeting.
We've talked through them a lot.
We've talked about, yeah, I mean, just real quick, I can give the high level before you go through it all, if you guys are ready.
Yeah, slow me down.
But um, yeah, so we, we have had several work sessions, obviously, about this and we've incorporated all of those changes into this document that we've discussed. I do want to point out one thing, amendment number three. This is something that uh, we did not discuss. Uh, and this has to do with uh, section 22.07, letter E, four, in regards um, to these charity boxes, which are permitted accessory uses in commercial districts. So you know how you go to like the shopping center and um, there's those boxes like put your clothes in here or, you know, look, basically the charity boxes. We had an issue come up over at Crowd Crossing, actually, where two popped up in the front parking lot in a couple of the parking spots. And uh, I worked with the property owner to get those removed. Um, but I thought that really we should, if we don't want those things showing up in our commercial districts, we might want to add a, add a line in here, giving a restriction on the number and location of where they could be located. So I thought since we were kind of already looking at this, and I get it if you guys are like, no, I need to think about this more, we can take this out. Um, I thought it would be something easy that we might be able to put in, since we're already updating this section, but basically putting a limit on no more than two of those charity boxes on a lot, um, and that they cannot be located between the front wall of the building and the public road right away.
I, I thank you, Heather, because I had thought perhaps the board had discussed that at the last meeting.
We did not, yeah, that's my fault.
Was that read through? No, it's okay. Uh, so this is adding another item for you to regulate.
Yeah, and I, but I think it's good because I, you know, they become trash. What it ends up being is just a dumping ground for items that don't fit into the containers anymore. And I would rather put it in such a way where we have something like, okay, when they popped up, I had to kind of use my, you know, I had to look at, okay, what do I really have in my toolbox to tell this shopping center owner that they can't be there? Well, the only thing I really had was that they were short on parking spots. So they already had a variance to limit the number of parking spots and by placing these charity boxes within the parking spot, put them under the number of parking spots they are allowed to have. And that's what I used to tell them to get rid of. But we truly don't want these in the front of our beautiful storefronts. Um, then I think we should just add a couple of things in here that, and, and this can be enforced just like any other zoning, you know, is enforced. Usually people comply, it's the ones that don't. And that's where it gets difficult, you know, is it worth taking some on the court? And, and that's where enforcement gets difficult, is, is when they're not working with us and so.
Thank you for the suggestion. Heather, any comments?
No.
The insert here from Heather?
Good logic.
But then again, if you, if everyone is satisfied with these, um, you know, and you do want to move forward with initiating and setting a public hearing, then we would um, need a motion tonight to, to set the public hearing.
Okay.
Um, for these amendments, but you would want to articulate what all the amendments are. Um, and then, and the email that I sent you guys earlier, um, has to be within 20 to 40 days. The hearing has to be within 20 to 40 days of you initiating the amendment. So our, our next regular meeting for April 4th.
April 4th.
Would work out for that if that's what the board wanted to do.
Okay. So the action then this evening is only to convene a public hearing?
Uh, to make a motion to initiate the amendments, uh, yeah, one through 11 and then set the time and date.
Yeah, I meant.
Yeah.
We're not rendering a vote on each amendment?
Then you would need a, we still need a vote, Keith, right?
Subsequent to the public hearing, I thought.
To initiate the amendment?
Yeah, to sort of start the process so that you can have the public hearing, because after the public hearing, then you can have the final vote.
The final, right, okay.
Can they do one vote tonight to initiate all 12 amendments and then?
Um.
And then at the public?
That I'm not sure of.
I think that's what we've done the best.
Yeah, I think so.
And then when it gets to the public hearing, we'll have one public hearing for all 11, but vote on each one individually.
So it's, um, it's a motion to.
To initiate.
To initiate.
Text amendments.
For public hearing, motion. So.
Yeah.
Is it appropriate for me to read each one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, then ask for a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. We'll get there.
Okay, all right. Um, so um, as just discussed, the proposed um, zoning amendments, uh, enumerated here from one to 11, beginning with amendment number one, is to revise section 5.02A 105, indoor commercial recreation to allow a restaurant as an accessory use. If there are any comments or questions from the board, please interrupt me as we go through each one, um, if there's any consideration for us to discuss. Amendment number two, revise section 22.03, table of uses to amend the list of permitted uses, conditional uses and accessory uses in the commercial and industrial districts. Amendment number three, revise section 22.07E4, charity boxes to limit the number allowed and add location requirement. As just discussed, reviewed, overview by Heather. Uh, amendment number four, revise section 13.08, child or adult daycare center to eliminate the reference to the MNRD two districts and require compliance with the Ohio Fire, Fire Code. Amendment number five, revise section 13.16, adult group home to require compliance with the Ohio Fire Code. Amendment number six, revise section 13.19, research and development labs to allow in the Gateway Health District. Uh, amendment number seven, revise section 13.21, garden or nursery retail sales, non-wholesale, to allow in the B2 general business district. Amendment number eight, revise section 13.25, gas stations to delete capital district and to require compliance with the Ohio Fire Code. Amendment number nine, revise section 13.26, car wash to delete capital district and to add conditions for accessory uses and vacuum areas. Amendment number 10, revise section 13.32, outdoor storage and/or display in an association with a permitted or conditional use to add location and screening requirements for outdoor storage areas. And finally, amendment number 11, revise section 13.36, innovative site PD to require the plan to indicate the precise use or land use proposed and to add permitted uses and revise accessory uses allowed in the district. I just want to comment on, on amendment number nine, I believe that was the vacuum areas you discussed at last month's meeting. Am I correct in that? And that was duly noted, I thought that was real good discussion you had in there in terms of those vacuum areas, noise, things of consideration, so that. So, uh, having read all 11 amendments. So having read all 11 amendments, I entertain a motion to take all other amendments to consideration for a public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second from on. A roll call? Heather, I'll do a roll call?
Yeah, we can do a roll call.
Please.
Sure. Mr. Langenfelter?
Aye.
Mr. Repper?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Terriaco?
Aye.
Mr. Iphilius?
I'll do the aye. Aye.
Thank you, board. So that public hearing then will be scheduled for our next meeting of April the 4th, 2023, for the 11 amendments. I presume then, Heather, you do the formal announcement, publications and such?
Yes, sir.
For the public hearing?
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is, I don't think is just a discussion on the zoning commission reserve jurisdiction for the I9, I N9 group LLC project. I realize you spoke about it last month, relative to status. Today, is this to bring forward a status?
Well, I was hoping that there wouldn't be an update, but?
Oh.
Stay with Keith.
Keith? Yeah, I spoke with Mike Lucas, he said it's still in the works, and that's kind of all I've gotten out of him lately, so.
Okay.
It sounds like it's still in discussion with the applicant, the I9 group, and Maru's Brothers, but we don't have a concrete, a signed contract yet.
And this contract, what's in negotiation, is language regarding the sidewalk?
Yeah, I believe it said, and correct me if I'm wrong, Heather, I think it said it will be revisited within five years? I think was the?
The draft version that I saw, yes, was putting a time limit on the zoning commission's reserve jurisdiction to, if you're going to have them put the sidewalk in, you had up to five years from the date that it was executed.
And that was determined by counsel, or?
Our counsel, our legal counsel put that in as a starting point?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So I believe the process, the hope was that the applicant would have already actually signed it, and then it would have been for your consideration here tonight, but the timing did not work out, so.
So given that, isn't there even a draft to look at, in terms of what's being discussed? Have we seen that?
I've seen it, but Mike didn't ask me to share that with you guys yet, so.
Okay.
Maybe between now and the next meeting, I can get that to you? I'm not, I'm not sure, this is?
At least request, I mean, it'd be good to see what language is being crafted here since?
It's very, it's very basic.
Since I, it's very basic? So if, because if I recall, it was, I mean, we weren't unanimous in approving that.
Yeah.
And there was some concern about how we were going to?
Right.
Enforce?
Correct.
Something, okay, okay.
I'll see if I can?
Okay.
Yeah, I'll see, we can check with Mike.
Very good.
Get that to you, maybe.
Thank you. With that, I think our business this evening is completed. Our next meeting, as stated earlier, is April the 4th, 2023. There being no other business, no other comments from the board, this meeting stands adjourned.